Thank goodness you're all accounted for.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 6, 2020 meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. I would like us all to rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please read the first item?
Yes, and just a reminder to the public, the council will not meet on Monday, January 20th. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on any of those items, under one, two, and three? Seeing none?
All right, now we can vote on these items. Items 1A and 2A were introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second? Introduced by McGinnis, second by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 4A, manager application of Sean Lacy for 9 South Char Grohl at 844 South Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you rarely believe it to be?
I swear.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Sean Lacy, L.A.C.E.Y., 1928 South 8th Street.
Well, tell us a little bit about your application.
Oh, I'm applying for the manager's position for our restaurant, 9 South Char Grohl. We've had a lot of managers leave over the -- we've had some long time ones, and since they're gone, I'm going to take over.
That's great. That's a lovely place to go.
Yay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions, besides what's on the menu for tonight? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Let's move on.
All right, next is item 4B, manager application of Madonna Cook for the various quick shops located within Lincoln. Should you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you rarely believe it to be?
It is.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Madonna Coke, 2334 North 44th Street, apartment 18, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Well, welcome. Tell us a little about all your applications. It looks like you're in charge of a lot of things.
I'm actually in charge of the 14 quick shops here in Lincoln. We're making some changes and trying to make sure that the alcohol in the locations of our high theft areas are being more secure. I've recently taken over the district. I've only been here for about three months, so the changes are slow, but they're happening.
Terrific. And how long have you been with quick shops?
Three years.
Three years, okay. Are there any other questions?
Welcome to Lincoln.
Thank you. I really like it.
Well, you will be kept very busy, it looks like.
Oh, definitely.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
All right, does someone wish to move approval of these two items?
I will move approval. Second.
Moved by Washington, seconded by Ward. Any discussion?
We're all waiting for Roy.
I was waiting for you to.
He has the flu. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 4A, manager application of Sean Lacy for 9 South Char Grohl at 844 South Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you rarely believe it to be?
I swear.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Sean Lacy, L.A.C.E.Y., 1928 South 8th Street.
Well, tell us a little bit about your application.
Oh, I'm applying for the manager's position for our restaurant, 9 South Char Grohl. We've had a lot of managers leave over the -- we've had some long time ones, and since they're gone, I'm going to take over.
That's great. That's a lovely place to go.
Yay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions, besides what's on the menu for tonight? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Let's move on.
All right, next is item 4B, manager application of Madonna Cook for the various quick shops located within Lincoln. Should you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you rarely believe it to be?
It is.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Madonna Coke, 2334 North 44th Street, apartment 18, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Well, welcome. Tell us a little about all your applications. It looks like you're in charge of a lot of things.
I'm actually in charge of the 14 quick shops here in Lincoln. We're making some changes and trying to make sure that the alcohol in the locations of our high theft areas are being more secure. I've recently taken over the district. I've only been here for about three months, so the changes are slow, but they're happening.
Terrific. And how long have you been with quick shops?
Three years.
Three years, okay. Are there any other questions?
Welcome to Lincoln.
Thank you. I really like it.
Well, you will be kept very busy, it looks like.
Oh, definitely.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
All right, does someone wish to move approval of these two items?
I will move approval. Second.
Moved by Washington, seconded by Ward. Any discussion?
We're all waiting for Roy.
I was waiting for you to.
He has the flu. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is amending the use of right-of-way permit previously approved by council resolution 8-74669 on February 24, 1992, to allow reconstruction of the exterior stairs for the Creamery Building located 701 P Street.
Good afternoon, council members. Harry Kross, Lincoln Transportation Utilities Department. I'm here to answer any questions or concerns regarding this application. It's primarily just to allow the owner to modify the front stairs. We're going to reconstruct them, and that will expand the footprint within our public right-of-way. This resolution will amend that and allow that additional space to be occupied.
First, I want to compliment the applicant for their sensitive design. I am curious what the materials are.
I'm not sure if there's a representative from -- Trevor Holt from the applicant. I'm with Lincoln Transportation. I guess I'm not specific to what all the materials are.
Well, the design looks like it's in keeping with the historic nature of the building.
It was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and they did approve the modifications.
Richard?
The only, I guess, concern I would have on this whole thing is it looks like it's moving further out into the public right-of-way, and they'll be using a lot more square footage of the public right-of-way?
Approximately 60 square foot. There is a significant portion of public sidewalk in front of this location, which shouldn't restrict pedestrians in any way. It's probably an additional 10 to 15 foot to the street curb from where the stairs will be.
Because that seems to always be kind of a tight area, especially for the farmer's market. There seems to be a lot of people right in front of that.
I have a question. I looked at the drawings so quickly. Does it have a handicap accessible ramp on one of the sides?
The handicap accessibility to the building is on the west side of the building where the parking lot is. This is primarily just stairs to the front entrance.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next is item 5B, amending resolution 8-87531 to include the use of the purchasing card or P-card, particularly as applied to travel expenditures.
Good afternoon. Bob Wallace, City County Purchasing Agent. I'm here today on this resolution as the purchasing department manages the P-card program, and we are asking for these changes to the travel policy as we have just completed in the last month the issuance of P-cards to all of the departments with the city. And with that, these changes in this policy will allow for several different things. Some of the primary things it will do is it'll have -- the employees will no longer have to use their own credit cards to make travel expenditures. The travel purchases can be made online so that there is an opportunity for discounts there. And then we will have less employee reimbursements, so that'll reduce the number of ACHs and checks that are issued for travel. And finally, there's the travel expenses will be able to be reviewed both on the department's side but also by our P-card administrator to ensure that we're following all of our policies and procedures that are in AR-43. So just for your information, we have 403 P-cards issued right now on the city side. And just on travel alone, we're doing about $22,000 worth of expenditures per month, which will add up to about $4,000 per year in rebates for the city. So any questions?
You got to my question, the review and who's -- there are policies in place, and you'll be checking these cards regularly.
Correct. The department themselves have to review all of the expenditures and the receipts, and then we have a P-card administrator in our office that goes through them as well each month to ensure consistency with policy.
Thank you. That would be my concern.
And then the beneficiary of all the rebates goes directly back to the city, correct?
It's general fund, yes.
General fund, so that's good. And then is this going to be implemented in the city and the county side, both?
The county already had this issue, this part of their original program when they started. And so this, for the city side, we waited until we had all of the departments in place before we asked for this to be made into policy.
And will there be any additional training for each department director, or?
Before anyone receives a P-card, they have to go through a training with our P-card administrator. It lasts about 40 minutes. And then another training is also offered to the accounting staff, which is another about 30 to 40 minutes. So no one can get a P-card without signing off on a sheet that they've taken that training. Or we also have some training that's being done through LPD and LFR using the Power DMS program so that all staff are trained before they're using a P-card.
And it'll have the same checks and balances currently for any disbursement?
It should, yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? No? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? All right, thank you very much. We'll go on to the next.
All right, next is item 5C, miscellaneous 19004, application of the urban development director to identify areas of the city that meet the statutory definition of extremely blighted under the Nebraska Community Development Law.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin. I'm with the urban development department. And what you have before you today is the approval of a map that describes an area in Lincoln as extremely blighted. Where this comes from is from state law, legislative bill 86 came forward last year, and I believe the number of people that voted for that was something like 47 to nothing, so a very controversial legislative bill. And what this allows are two things to happen within this area. First of all, homeowners that are owner occupied, purchasers of homes within the extremely blighted area will get a $5,000 state of Nebraska income tax credit as an offset against taxes that they paid in Nebraska. And the other component to this is the Department of Economic Development has a scoring system on how they award housing credits, and this would be a way, if you located in there, of getting additional points towards your application. Because they're competitive, you might have an advantage if you were doing a project within the extremely blighted area. The way this was determined was the city of Lincoln has blighted parts of Lincoln over the years, and that would be the first step. You had to have an area that was already designated as blighted. And then what became extremely blighted was that were two different components added to that. One was you had to be two times the state unemployment's rate, and the other component to this was that you had to have a poverty rate that was over 20%. So the area that you see on the map here are areas that qualify, both on -- they've been blighted in the past, they have poverty that qualifies them, and they have unemployment rates that qualify them. And once you've approved this, then people that do applications to DED or make a purchase for a home would be qualified for those credits. We'll post this on our website. Keyword, I'm told, is redevelopment. And then on the right-hand side, there will be some maps. So homeowners that are looking for a house would be able to look on the map that way. Later, as we rehab our website, we'll change it. We'll have a map section too, but that's a few months down the road. Are there any questions?
How are you getting the word out to realtors so that they can market these locations?
We've provided the information to the Realtors Association, we've to both the local Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Realtors, and then we've also provided it to the state agency as well. And of course, the newspaper's been writing articles about it as well. I've had a few phone calls from prospective people that are buying, so there are a few other little elements that I think people should be aware of. You can't go buy a house and then sell the house to your -- to a relative. It has to be an arms-length transaction. There's some other elements as well, but by and large, I think it's pretty straightforward.
So it must be owner occupied?
And it does need to be an owner occupied, yes.
And Benny, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Marvin, my question's a little tougher than that. When I talk with people in the community, residents of our city, they say that area's not blighted. How do we define blighted? Is there an easy way to explain? Most people hear blighted, they think of buildings as crumbling and just disaster area type things.
Well, I mean, that's a good question. There's a variety of different ways that you can go about determining whether something's blighted. One of the issues in the core of the downtown is the infrastructure. So if you have -- we have water and sewer pipes probably very close to this building that are 75 or 100 years old. So that's crumbling infrastructure. And then there are other areas that have blight, but those areas have been established, the downtowns and the other areas, have been established over the last 15 or 20 years that projects have been coming forward. And then there's a process where you all approve those blighted areas.
Yes.
This just looks at those two additional elements, the unemployment and the poverty, and adds those to those to make those areas extremely blighted.
Thank you.
Can you tell us if, when we vote tonight, today, this afternoon, when will it go into effect?
That's a good question. I'm thinking it's like right away, but maybe there's a curing process. Looks like it takes place right away. Another thing that there's a curing process of 30 days, and I didn't.
Now, so TMC City Law Department, the curing process would just be for bonds or redevelopment agreements. This designation would go into effect immediately. There's no wait period that goes with it or anything like that.
So all those prospective buyers would qualify tomorrow?
Yep.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't share. Do you foresee an impact on property values and the areas that you say are extremely blighted?
You know, I'm not a real estate appraiser, so I'm probably going to be stepping out in an area that I'm not comfortable.
Do you play one on TV?
I don't play one on TV.
Yes, Richard?
Well, to kind of answer your question a little bit, as I believe they will seem to go up a little bit, if there's a little chance that there'll be more buyers for some of the properties there in homeowners, plus the other incentives that may be available to others that want to work in this area, being in the extremely blighted area. So I could see at least some more opportunities in the area for homeownership or other things, so.
Well, thank you.
I think one of the intents is, because it only goes for owner occupied, is to try to create a leveler playing field between those investors who intend to buy a property and then turn it out as a rental versus an owner occupied who would buy the property and then live in it.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, let's move on.
Next is item 5D, comp plan amendment 19004, application of the planning director to amend the 2040 comp plan priority growth areas map to change approximately 225 acres from tier one, priority C, to tier one, priority B, on property generally bounded by South 98th Street on the west, Van Dorn Street on the south, MOPAC Trail on the north, and the alignment for South 105th Street on the east.
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. Here today before you to explain to you and to announce our support for this comprehensive plan amendment. This item was in front of the Planning Commission on December 4th and received approval eight to zero from the Planning Commission. I'll note on the map, just to give you some idea of where we're at, this is 98th Street here. This is Van Dorn. What you see here going to the west of 98th are areas that are under development already. And what is also to be noted here is that this area that's outlined, that is proposed for this comprehensive plan amendment, the Stevens Creek trunk line project basically bisects that area and provides the essential urban infrastructure that's needed to provide for this area to be identified as priority B instead of C in the comprehensive plan, which gives it status to move forward with urbanization by the year 2026, as the current comprehensive plan states. So we are in support of this. The main purpose reason for that is that the urban services are available with that trunk sewer line. The other urban services will be able to get to this area once proposals come forward, and it goes through the normal process of approval. I would also note that there is interest in developing this area, so that is the impetus for moving forward with this comprehensive plan amendment. Certainly will provide you any information or answer questions that you may have at this time.
Yes, Richard?
Is there a reason we just decided to just do this area instead of the other adjoining properties?
There are a few adjoining properties that currently are not actively discussing proposals with us, so some of that did come into this. This was an area that was identified to be fairly logical with some demarcations with the trail to the north, so there are some physical reasons using the streets, of course, as well. So this is an area where we are including two of the major parcels that are talking to us, but not going further beyond that, other than those that made the most sense to be part of this proposal.
So you, in essence, are waiting for one of the other parcel owners to come forward before you would come?
Yeah, well, I think the way to think about that is that if the parcels that we're talking about can be served by that trunk sewer, and there is interest, we will have that discussion at that time as well. I will note that we are beginning the process of updating our comprehensive plans, so topics like this are going to be spoken about, you know, publicly in over the next several months and over a year to talk about what areas should be coming into the more near-term development area. So certainly, I could see some of these areas being part of that as well. So I think we're kind of on the precipice of more of it happening, but these are the areas that either are currently talking to us about development or could be part of that conversation.
Okay, because this watershed area is a lot bigger than just what you were showing.
Correct.
So, ability and, okay.
Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carey, thanks for coming forward. Explain to me, we're moving from tier two to, tier C to tier B priority?
It's all in tier one. This is getting into kind of lingo for the comprehensive plan. It's all in tier one. We're talking about priority areas. So priority area A is the area that either is already, basically already under development or has approvals. B area is identified as areas that can be served by urban services by the midpoint of the current plan, which would be the 2026 point in time. And then C is beyond that, that would more or less wait for those other B areas to develop. And so we're bringing this area from C to B because we're acknowledging that now with the trunk sewer line available to it, it can develop in the near term.
So does this help us establish planning for the future? Are we encouraging developers to go someplace? What is the -- it's already starting to develop. Why change the tiers now?
Well, so this area that we're talking about.
I changed the priority level.
Correct. The area that we identified for this change in the priority area isn't underdeveloped yet. There is interest in developing it. And the way that the kind of the step-through process here is to bring it into that priority B area first, once we can acknowledge that the urban services can serve it, which we can here. And then, yes, then that will move forward with, in the near future, most likely, some specific development proposals that will come forward and be approved by your body as well.
Okay, thank you.
Could you please point out the MOPAC Trail and how changing it from priority C to priority B will impact the MOPAC Trail?
So the MOPAC Trail, this is A Street up here. This is that right-of-way that comes along, and then we'll cross A Street, and then it follows that old railroad right-of-way out to the east. So that's the alignment that we're currently working with. So the actual, there really won't be any proposal to change the alignment of the trail necessarily. If you remember that there was some discussion up here in the last couple of years where we actually ended up leaving it on alignment. So the impact of the trail certainly eventually will be urbanization around it. There's no doubt about that. But at this time, there's no discussion about changing the alignment of the trail.
Perhaps only change might be an additional crossing.
There certainly could be some crossings, street network, as far as when we're trying to develop an area, yes. So those will be discussed and addressed as we get specific proposals to come in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from up here?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, we can move on.
All right, we'll go on to items 5E and F, approving the Stone Elephant redevelopment agreement and amending the fiscal year 1920 CIP to authorize and appropriate 120,000 in tip funds.
Thank you again, Dan Marvin, Director of Urban Development. What you have before you today is a redevelopment on North 27th Street. On October 28th, the city council approved by a six to nothing vote, a comprehensive plan conformance vote. And what you have today is what's called Stone Elephant LLC, which is located at 612 North 27th Street. This project continues urban development's efforts to improve North 27th Street corridor, and that work started over 15 years ago.
What you have before you today is a redevelopment on North Twenty-seventh Street. On October 28th, the City Council approved by a six to nothing vote, a comprehensive plan conformance vote, and what you have today is what's called Stone Elephant LLC, which is located at 612 North Twenty-seventh Street. This project continues urban development's efforts to improve North Twenty-seventh Street corridor, and that work started over fifteen years ago. We've been in communication with the Oriental Market owners for a number of years, and the TIF process that's before you today has been a process, has been a dialogue for a number of years. It's a family-owned business, it's been family-owned for over thirty years, it's planning to expand by doubling the size of their footprint and increase an additional twenty parking stalls. The project cost for this development is 1.6 million dollars, of which 120,000 dollars is tax increment financing. It's a small TIF loan, it's available for small businesses, and TIF proceeds are going to go 2,000 dollars to cover an administrative fee, 20,000 dollars for site preparation and demo, and the balance 98,000 dollars for facade improvements. In the redevelopment agreement, we've addressed screening and for the trash receptacles and the pallets, and any other clutter that would be along this area so that we can keep the Twenty-seventh Street corridor looking good. And site preparation has already begun, and it's allowed under the community development laws. The developer and Tom Houston are here today to answer any of your questions. Entertain any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Dan?
Not this time, maybe in a moment.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston, my address is 233 South Thirteenth Street. By the way, we have moved back downtown, so I know my address again. Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Stone Elephant, with me today is John Chan, who's a principal of Stone Elephant. Stone Elephant owns and operates the Asian market at 610 North Twenty-seventh Street, plans to double the size of the structure from a 5,500 square foot existing building, and add it, expand it to approximately 11,000 square feet. The sequencing will be that, that the new structure will be constructed, the operations will be moving into the new structure, the existing structure will then be renovated, and then upon completion next fall, probably late fall, the entirety of the 11,000 square feet will be open and providing additional offerings for the patrons and customers of Stone Elephant. The redevelopment agreement and the, the CIP amendment on your agenda today, the only thing that's somewhat unusual about it, this is a small purchase, a small TIF purchase program, so that it's a little bit different in the funding mechanism, but from the perspective of the developer, it's a very beneficial aspect to have the small purchase program to provide a mechanism for the smaller projects to have success also. One of the challenges in this kind of project is really coming up with a projection of the accurate tax increment financing amount. The new construction obviously adds new value, the renovation of an existing store doesn't add a lot of tax value for assessment purposes. But we have a good example, just down the street at Los Lobos, they had a similar plan there where they doubled their store size and renovated existing stores, so we follow that pattern, so we're real comfortable with the projections that we have for the valuation of the facility. And the, the plan then, as, as Director Marvin indicated, site preparation has started, we do have the benefit of the change in the community development law that allows site preparation and site acquisition prior to the approval of a project. And the plan would be, the construction would continue as quickly as possible because we've had some nice stretch of weather, and if we can get going further with the nice weather, then the completion would be next fall in 2020. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Could you tell us a little bit about, is it gonna be a sit-down eating area in addition to the marketplace, or?
It's gonna focus more of a marketplace, the sale of product at retail for, for the customers and expanding its offerings, really de-emphasize the sit-down aspects of it and more of a retail sale. And obviously with the doubling of the size of the facility, they will be able to expand their offerings to a wider variety of uses. It is, does specialize in Asian food, obviously, and probably ninety percent of its customers are patrons of the Asian food, so I think that will continue to be the emphasis.
That was, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Houston, that was kind of my question. I'm excited about this, as we all know that part of our community is a food desert, and I'm excited to see a grocery store expand there, but, and I personally have been in several Asian markets and would have general food items available to public. How do we encourage other members of the community to use that? Will it provide services for other members of our community?
I, I think so, certainly. I, I think the expansion of the business operations will provide additional opportunities for outreach and, and probably a larger marketing budget, I would imagine, too. So I, I think that's part of the-
And I get my eggs, milk, and bananas there as well.
Yes, good, continue to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more question for Dan. Director Marvin.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You said this is a small TIF project, what makes unique about that, the financing of it and the ownership of the bonds?
Yes, I think typically you would see Mike Rogers in the room here, so Gilmore Bell would draft the, the documents, and then there's a cost associated with that, that bond ordinance. We don't have that with the small TIF. And the size that we would normally do would be projects that would be 200,000 dollars or less. And once they get over a certain amount, then it's more appropriate for those to be, because the way these are done, the city earns the interest on this rather than an investor, and it's a competitive interest rate, you know, the rates on, out there in the market right now are low, one and a half percent, so it's not a tough bogey to beat the interest rate and earn more for the tax dollars this way. But there's the logistics of handling amounts that would be very large, so the city is, is kept it at an amount for small TIF in the couple of hundred thousand, and then there's an overall cap of three and a half million dollars that you can do in small TIF. And I think the last time we looked at that, we were well under that number, maybe half that amount, so we have some room and capacity to go above where we're at.
This seems to be a good tool for small businesses-
Yes.
-and for people expanding and smaller projects.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, thank you, Madam Chair, yes. Small TIF, large TIF, I'm a little TIF here, I'm not, will it still be the same fifteen-year increment applied?
Everything else works the same, the mechanics of where the funds come from, they don't go to a local bank, they can use the resources, the cash resources of the city to then tap into that, and the city in essence works as the bank. There are protections for the city, so that we're not talking about exposing taxpayers to a loss here. Effectively, they will pay back through the increment in the property tax, and any shortfall, if there was any, would be responsible to the owner as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I think we can start voting.
We can vote on these items. Item five A is the use of the public right-of-way permit at 701 P Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved, second.
Introduced by Bowers, second by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Five B is amending resolution A-87531 to include the use of purchasing card, particularly as applied to travel expenditures, introduced by Bowers.
So moved, second.
Introduced by Bowers, seconded by?
Ooh, pick me.
Show. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Five C is miscellaneous 19004, Application of the Urban Development Director to identify areas of the city that meet the statutory definition of extremely blighted under then Nebraska Community Development Law, introduced by Bowers.
So moved, second.
Introduced by Bowers, second by Show. Yes, Richard?
I'd be remiss not to bring up a line that Roy wanted me to bring up on this, that this is a good thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
I wondered who was gonna supply-
Yeah.
We appreciate that. It looks like we have a, a motion to amend, a substitute amendment?
Do we?
Bill number nineteen R.293?
All right. It's two eighty-three.
That was on our-
It's not on this one, is it?
It's a big one.
Timsey City Law Department, there is a motion to amend, is to accept a substitute resolution. There were some exhibits that were not able to be produced when this initially went out in packets on December 12th because of the, the holidays and the, the two council meetings where we didn't meet. We didn't do publication until the 20th and 27th, obviously those weren't ready to go out, as well as a couple of other notices. So this is just to incorporate those exhibits into the resolution that were not previously part of it.
Little bit of a cleanup.
Little bit of a cleanup.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah.
So, Mr. C, can you tell us which are the items that you've added here in our packet? Do I see this, I see the whole motion to amend.
Right.
Some of it is familiar.
The map is not, the map has been there the entire time. The exhibits with respect to notice for Planning Commission would have been available, but the ones with respect to notice to the City Council were not available again because these packets went out December 12th, and some of those notices didn't go out till after that.
Just the notice, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we need a motion to introduce, motion to amend number one.
Madam Chair, Ms. Ward wants to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ward, seconded by Show on motion to amend number one, which is a substitute amendment. Is there any other discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next is item five D, Comp Plan Amendment 19004, introduced by Bowers.
So moved, second.
Introduced by Bowers, second by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item five E is the Stone Elephant Redevelopment Agreement, introduced by Bowers.
So moved, second.
Introduced by Bowers, seconded by Washington. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Number one.
Uh, second.
Introduced by McGinnis, seconded by Washington. Could you tell us a little bit about this motion?
Uh, yes, this is to amend the excess TIF agreement in section 507, stating that if any excess TIF revenues resulting from the tax increment provision of the redevelopment, redeveloped property is not needed or required to pay the TIF bond purchaser for the TIF indebtedness, and it shall be expended by the city to improve and rehabilitate the alley within the project area, is added, or returned to the applicable taxing authorities as provided in the community development law.
Is there any discussion on this amendment? Yes.
I have some questions. Mr. Marvin, could you help me with this? So, thank you for your time. Are you familiar with this? Have you seen this?
Yes, I'm familiar with this, and Urban Development can support the amendment.
Okay, I was gonna ask a little bit about overrun, I'm finding the right word here, excess. Does this happen often? Is there often excess?
I mean, it's certainly better to have an excess than a deficit, you know, because we're talking about paying off a note. And so generally, the calculations are conservative.
That would be fact.
And so the question becomes, at the back end, twelve years out, thirteen years out, where do those funds go? The notes can be paid off, and we can close out the district, and then the, the escalation, the increment, then just all of the revenue then just goes to the various taxing agencies. Or what has happened in the past is it runs a total fifteen years, and there's a, an additional increment, and the, I think the concern from the councilman was, where do those go? And there's a drawn area in the back, and one funding source that where there is really no funding in city budget are alleys, and so this would allow for funds to go in the case of deteriorating alleys to repair alleys if there was a surplus. Otherwise, the alley's in good shape, and the note's been paid off, then it just goes back to the individual taxing agencies to, to get that increment at that point.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah.
Yes.
And one of my other thoughts on this was that if we can get a good alley or good paved alley back there, maybe some of the patrons will use the alley for access to this property and not just have used the South Twenty-seventh or the North Twenty-seventh Street as their only access to the property. The alley is paved and it's been redone as you go north the vine, so this would be kind of a continuation of, of developing nice alleys from vying down behind these businesses and maybe help move the traffic off Twenty-seventh Street.
I'd like to say that I will support this motion to amend, I think it's, it's so important that we take into consideration all the alleys on any and every TIF project that we authorize going forward, because the alleys are an important access of, for either pedestrian traffic in some cases, depending upon where it's at, but also to improve the whole look and appearance of, of our city. So I think it's, it's something that I'd like to see included on every TIF project going forward, wherever it's appropriate, so I am gonna support this. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
And the main motion?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item five F is amending the fiscal year 1920 CIP to authorize and appropriate 120,000 in TIF funds for the project, introduced by Bowers.
So moved, second.
Introduced by Bowers, second by Show. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item six A is text amendment 19008, Application of H&amp;H Builders to amend the Lincoln's Book Code, Section 27.72.020 Subsection C, Exceptions to the Minimum Lot Requirements Residential, Providing that a vacant lot is at least forty feet wide and was final platted prior to November 2nd, 1953, may be used for a single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, or other permitted uses where applicable.
Hi, I'm Brandon Stansik, my address is 8933 South Seventy-First. And, and about the last year and a half or so, we've come across some lots to where there used to be a house on there, and they owned the lot right next to it, and a lot of them were ninety-foot wide, so we're thinking, you know, it'd be cool to put two houses here. And then we come down and talk to the city, and they told us that fifty-foot was the minimum, where we could, we wanted forty, forty-five. So our only option was to build a duplex, and we're thinking, geez, it'd be a lot better if we could, you know, have two houses instead of a duplex, and then came across a couple more that were the same way, and we just, we'd like to build houses instead of just duplexes, I think it'd look better for the neighborhood, be better for first-time homebuyer to, you know, buy an affordable house and start building some equity, and that's pretty much-
That's what we're looking to do.
Yeah. And we, so we went to, when we went up to get a permit and talking about it, and then they led us to city commissioners, and they were all about it, too, and so this is kind of where we're at with this now, so.
I wonder who that guy is?
Yes.
Your name?
Oh, Jeff O'Gorman, 5027 Pinehurst Boulevard. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, you bet.
Yes, Richard?
I think this is a, a good deal, and I'm really appreciative you brought this forward and went through the process, as much fun as it is, but, but thank you for bringing and went through the process, as much fun as it is, but, uh, but thank you for bringing it all the way through.
Thank you, bet.
Are there any questions? Yes, Benny?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Carey.
Okay, well, thank you both.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department?
Mr. Carey, we talk about housing, we talk about infill, we talk about lot sizes. Help me understand, what do you, how do you feel about this?
Yeah, so...
How does the planning department feel about this?
Yeah, Planning Department is in support of this. The Planning Commission voted 8-0 in support of this. This is, yeah, I think this, basically what this is, is it exposed some language that was limiting the ability to do some of the housing that we would like to see, both infill as well as more affordable. And so, you know, we're appreciative of the, of the, the application, and we are in support of it. It really gets rid of this, um, when a lot was under common ownership previously, it was a, it was a limitation that really doesn't make sense right now, so we're removing that limitation, allowing for several lots. I think it's upwards of 80 lots that have been identified to date in, throughout the existing city that might be able to benefit from this, so we are definitely in support.
So, going forward, the process will be much easier for anyone besides H&amp;H Builders that comes forward, that pave the way for all the other builders that would like to do maybe smaller homes to fit a more appropriate on this lot size.
Correct, yeah. So, this, this down to 40 feet wide for the lot size effectively means that they'll be allowed to build on it, and it's a, like I said, it was a limitation that was exposed through the application, and we definitely are in support of removing that limitation.
That's terrific.
No, you go.
This text amendment is only for legal lots that were platted prior to 1953?
Correct.
So, there really isn't, is there a way that new lots can be built on that are 40-foot wide?
Yes, so really, at about that time, that also was the timeframe of when the community unit plan, the CUP mechanism, was brought into existence that allows for more flexibility when proposed, you know, in that manner. That mechanism wasn't available prior to 1953, and therefore, that's why we've identified those lots legally created prior to 53, to give this flexibility. Moving forward, either today or in the past, since then, that CUP process and mechanism was available.
And the type of homes that may be being built in the future will require different lot sizes and such? I mean, you're always looking at those.
Yeah, I think that there, this is probably a small but important piece of the bigger picture of trying to allow for more flexibility and infill to happen, hopefully at an affordable level. So this is one, one piece of that toolbox that we'd like to put in place.
Good, thank you.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item?
Can I say one more thing?
One more thing, real quick.
I just want to say, if it passed or whatever, I mean, we would still build to setback requirement by the neighborhoods and, you know, still build by what we're allowed to do. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Anyone else? Let's move on.
All right, we'll go on to item 6B, change of Zone 15013A to amend the Eastmont at Yankee Hill planned unit development to allow residential, office, and commercial uses with associated waivers on property generally located at the southwest corner of South 52nd Street and Yankee Hill Road.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Brad Marshall, I'm a Wilson. My address is 601 P Street. I'm here before you today on behalf of Lincoln Federal Bankor. They have submitted the application for amendment to the Eastmont Towers PUD. It was approved on December 4th with a vote of support of 5-0 by the Planning Commission. There was amendment to the conditions brought forward by applicant that was also supported. The proposal changes the original plan of Eastmont Towers as it was sold, and a plan developed by Lincoln Federal to really extend the development to the west, which is Wilderness Heights Development. We came forward with that application a couple of years ago with the changes there because of the recommendations of the pipeline planning area, and we are moving forward with this middle now to extend really that development to the east now that they control this piece of ground. There is a, there is a pipeline in Yankee Hill Road, there is a setback of 221 feet, and trying to follow the comp plan and the recommendations by Health and Human Services to provide services in that particular area. We have proposed commercial and office uses in that pipeline plan area. And as you can see on the plan here, there is a B2 area, and there's adjacent to Yankee Hill, and then an O3. The O3 is within that pipeline planning area where dwellings are going to be prohibited or recommend no usage of those residential areas, and to provide an additional buffer to the acreages to the east. That is very similar to what was previously approved with the, with the Eastmont Towers PUD. And then the remaining portion of the property, which is in the south half, just a little bit more than the south half of the property, is proposed as R3, where townhome type of lots are being proposed there. We had a couple of public hearing, or public meetings with the neighborhoods, Tower Acres at Kinsington Acres to the east and Country Acres to the, to the Country Acres south, which is actually to the north of this property. I listened to a couple of, of concerns that they may have had about the property. At the time, there were really two major ones that came out of that, that those discussions. One was a use that was really extended from the west to have automobiles. We eliminated that from the application, automobile sales and service, I should say. We eliminated that from the application, so that is not included in the B2 area. And traffic was the other one. So, if you're introducing commercial-type development and additional residential units, what is going to be done as part of the traffic improvements to the particular area? This application comes forward with, without an agreement, but I, what I can tell you is there is an agreement in place for Yankee Hill Road to the west with Wilderness Heights, and an application that has been submitted for the Yankee Hill Golf Course. Lincoln Federal Bankor is engaged in discussions between that developer and the city, kind of a three-way, three-way discussion, and an agreement is in discussions right now to improve Yankee Hill. We did show this diagram, and, and again, it's not part of this proposal, but we're looking at how we can improve Yankee Hill Road with the use of impact fees. We did a couple of different analysis, and we ended up, our current discussion and proposal or addition of a couple of roundabouts at 44th and 48th Street. You can see Tower Heights is kind of on the eastern edge of these improvements. There is also, I should say, an investigation going on to see if we can take our impact fees and extend them further, and so that we can actually capture in like South 52nd Street, which is the eastern edge of, of this, this PUD that's before you. And so, those are ongoing. There will be improvements to South 52nd. That was included in the application, that is a currently gravel roadway that will be paved, and we did ask for a couple of waivers so that we did not, we could lessen the impacts to the existing acreages to the east. They have, they have existing trees, they have windbreaks that are there that actually be helpful to those owners that are in those acreages to provide some visual obstruction, and so that we don't have to engage in grading and so forth on their properties, so. But that property will be paved and improved to the south, southern edge of the, the PUD area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I see in your application, you've asked for a number of waivers, and the Planning Department has not agreed with the applicant on each of the waivers requested, and I would like to have your perspective on your need for the dead-end street?
Yeah.
And the block length of greater than 1,000 feet without a pedestrian way. So if you would point out to me which of the dead-end streets is in discussion, and why do you feel a need for that?
I should have actually probably addressed this. The, the staff comments actually said to revise the site plan in accordance and acceptance to LTU.
Okay.
We have done that. This is actually a revised plan that I'm showing you here. The bulbs...
Different, but I thought...
The bulbs and the, kind of, the turnarounds are larger than we had originally submitted here. We have run this by Bob Simmering at LTU, and LTU has accepted this proposal. We've shown them how the layout would work with driveways and sidewalks and so forth, and increase that turnaround radius that can be really important to emergency personnel and engine, fire engines that are going down those streets that need to turn around. So we have come to a conclusion with LTU and acceptance of these. They are actually going to be, they were proposed as private streets, but with the changes, they are going to be public as well. So, I believe that has been put to rest with LTU, and we've made those changes to the acceptance of them. There was a discussion, and I alluded to, there was conditions that we amended as part of the, the discussion with Planning Commission. There are two real block lengths that are fairly long. We do show two connections to the acreages to the south that will eventually go south and connect to Music Lane, which is about another couple hundred feet to the south. So we, we show those as part of the subdivision standards and regulations. The block length, we do include a pedestrian access, kind of mid-block to the south and connect there. That one was, I'm just going to point that one out, that is kind of right at the limitation. We're just under that, we didn't ask for a waiver to that one. The second one was a staff comment that suggested that there should be pedestrian access from our, our street that goes east-west and connect to Yankee Hill Road. And we've been doing this on several PUDs along Yankee Hill Road. It kind of caught us by surprise that we were going to have to require the pedestrian access through the commercial development where we hadn't been required to do so in the past. After discussions with Planning Department, what my understanding was, if this was a PUD that included residential that were up to the arterial roadway, then, then that access would be required, and probably a lot of need for, for people living in those, having access out to the road, and be able to disseminate to the east and west and so forth. So, at Planning Commission, we came to a resolution that, since they are commercial uses, in addition to, we had some concerns about meeting ADA accessibility and getting out with the type of grades, there's actually a detention cell mid-block here, and will have a lot of slope and so forth, and sit a little bit higher than Yankee Hill Road. And then there's another detention cell on the northwest corner. So our concern was being able to meet the requirements if it were indeed required, and putting that onto an outlot where, where, like I said, there's detention, there's going to be ponding of water, we didn't really want sidewalks go through there, it'd be questionable of slopes, and you get into winter and ice and so forth. There was a question, well, could we send it through one of the lots? And our position, I guess, was, well, we didn't want to send pedestrian traffic through a private business, and then they take on the liability of that. So, through all of that discussion, we came to the agreement, and then it was supported at Planning by both Planning Staff and Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do you need staff?
I would like that, yes. You're reading my mind.
I am.
Yes, Mr. Carey.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. I'm always a little confused when we get a recommendation from the Planning Commission with a conditional, and then things change in the process. After they've looked at it, things change, and we get to look at something that's slightly different.
Yes, although in this case, as Brad was explaining, that the, that latest change and amended condition was part of an agreed-upon amended staff report, so that that actually was what was acted on by the Planning Commission. So, what actually, so what happened in this case was what went initially to the Planning Commission was slightly different. What they acted on is what Brad just explained, is what we are in agreement with.
I got the sequence wrong.
Yep, no, it's fine. It's, it gets confusing.
Yeah, I thought that they acted, then he changed.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, that helps me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? I think we can move on.
All right, we'll go on to item 6C, amending Sections 8.32.010, 17.58.010, 17.58.135, 24.38.020, 24.38.030, 24.42.020, 28.02.030, and 28.03.030 of Lincoln Municipal Code to redesignate the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality as the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. The rest of the ordinances that you have for hearing today are what we within the city call code cleanup. And our policy is that every year, we go out to all of the departments and ask them for ideas for things in the code that are outdated, that need to be cleaned up, and these are anticipated to be things that are not substantive in nature. These are either things because we're behind the times, or because, in some cases, state law changed, or in some cases, policy within the city changed, and the code did not keep current with what the current policy was. So the idea is that these are relatively non-controversial items, and we bring them to you all in one fell swoop. So, I will go through them one by one and be happy to answer any questions that I can, and there may be some questions that you'll have that the different departments will have to come up and fill in the gaps. So, 19130 that Teresa just referred to is just to catch up, the Nebraska, State of Nebraska had an energy office, they combined that with what was then DEQ to become the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy. There are a number of references within our code to the old Department of Environmental Quality, and so this is just changing the name from the old department name for the State of Nebraska to the new department name.
Okay, I see no questions, I think we can move on. And does Teresa have to read each one?
I think so, yes.
So, the next one would be amending various sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code to redesignate the Public Works and Utilities Department as the Transportation and Utilities Department, and the Public Works Director as the Transportation and Utilities Director, and to also redesignate Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality as Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy.
So, some of you might recall, a couple of years ago, the Public Works Department was rebranded, renamed Transportation Utilities. At that time, we went through and cleaned up, made a lot of those changes. We didn't get them all changed, so with this ordinance change, I think we'll go ahead and clean up all of those. There are, are some segments that have the update for the Department of Environment and Energy that I referred to. As you notice, as you go through there, some of these changes, they're pages long and we're just changing a few words, but that's because we have to be clear about keeping what the whole code section says. So that's why you get a lot of pages for just a few word changes in some of these code cleanups.
Any questions? Okay, let's keep moving on.
All right, next is amending Section 2.42.040 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to update the descriptions of division within the Urban Development Department to reflect the titles that have been in use since the 2018 reorganization.
So, as referred to, in 2018, the urban development did a reorganization. We did not do a code cleanup in 2019 that would have caught up with this, but I suppose as a, as a result of that, we gave urban development plenty of time to figure out if these changes made sense. So, this is not a reorganization of the department, that's already taken place. This is only a recognition in the code that the reorganization took place, and the current names of those divisions within urban development.
Questions? And, you know, I failed to ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on any of the three items that we just went through? Okay, let's really move on.
All right, next is repealing Chapter 8.28 from the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to nursing homes as they are regulated by the state.
This is, it seems like a substantive change, but it is a recognition that decades ago, the State of Nebraska took over the regulation of nursing homes. The, our local Department of Health has no responsibility as far as the regulation. Nursing homes, that's handled by the State of Nebraska, so we're just deleting this section of the code since we don't have that responsibility.
Even the inspection of, of a nursing home to make sure it's up to standards and qualifications?
Right, so for consistency and specialization, those are all handled by the State of Nebraska.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to add some comments on this one? Okay, thank you, we shall move on.
All right, next is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Sections 2.62.020, 2.65.020, and 2.66.020 in order to update references to federal regulations regarding disability definitions. Amending Sections 2.62.140, 2.65.140... Amending Sections 2.62.140, 2.65.140, and 2.66.107 to eliminate a mistaken reference to an individual cost of living adjustment. Amending Sections 2.62.180, 2.65.180, and 2.66.140 to clarify the responsibility for making investment decisions. And amending Section 4.62.015 in order to harmonize the city's pension investment standard.
This is one of the more complicated code cleanups. It has some things that are very straightforward. For example, if you look on page four, there's a reference to a federal code, a specific edition. That specific edition has been, is no longer the current edition. So rather than replacing it with the current edition, which will be then outdated within a couple of years, we're just taking the reference to the edition out of the code section. Going through the other changes, there is a reference to an individual cost of living adjustment that has never been used. Part of what we're doing in this is we're, we're cutting out a lot of sections and one of the goals is to harmonize. We actually, when you go through this, this code section, you have references to two different standards for making investment decisions. And so we wanted to have one standard. We did work with, a couple of years ago, an expert in pension law who made a recommendation as to what was the appropriate standard. And that's the one, the sole one we're adopting with this code change. And then there is, and this did not escape the notice of the council, there is a retraction of the responsibility to approve all investments and contracts for pension investments by the City Council. And this is a code cleanup that was a follow-up on a change that was made a number of years ago when the Pension Advisory Committee was, was created. I'm sure that you're all aware that that includes representatives from both the police and fire pension, the people whose money is really at stake here, as well as volunteers from the community who have some background in making investments. And so that change was made a number of years ago, giving them the responsibility to oversee the pension investments. We did not at that time take out this reference to the investments and the contracts being approved by the City Council. So if the question was asked legally, who had the final say? The answer was legally, under our code, two different bodies simultaneously. So this is an effort to clean that up as well.
Okay, any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, we will move forward.
All right, next is amending Section 9.48.010 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to amend the description of marijuana to exempt hemp in conformity with the recent change in state law.
One of the things we do with our criminal code is we try to keep up with the changes in state laws that apply to things that are also within our criminal code. I'm sure many of you are aware that in the last legislative session, the state legislature, which under state law marijuana is, is still criminalized or illegal, but there's an exemption for hemp based on its THC level. This harmonizes our criminal code with existing state law by creating that exemption for hemp.
Any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? We can move on.
All right, next is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Sections 10.26.435 and 10.26.470 to extend the length of designated arterial streets.
This is my favorite.
I'm waiting for this. Yeah, I want to hear it.
As the city grows, the, the length of our arterial streets expands along with the city growth. In 2010, there was a list of city arterial streets that was expanded. Included within that expansion was Pine Lake Road and, and South Street. And somebody, in checking through it, discovered that even though that ordinance change was passed by the City Council in 2010, it was not codified. So this was an attempt to codify what we should have done back in 2010. But when we codified it and sent it to city departments, Planning and Transportation Utilities to review, they noticed that, wait a minute, South Street should not be an arterial street as far as it was passed in 2010. That would actually be in violation of our comp plan. And so we are creating, we're attempting to correct two mistakes at the same time. We're codifying the extension of Pine Lake Road to 112th Street, but we're also repealing the extension of South Street because it was extended beyond what it should be under our comp plan. And we'll try to get it codified this time.
Okay. Clear enough?
It'll take 10 years, right?
Every, every 10 years.
The next comp plan may actually make it an arterial.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this one? Let's move on.
All right, next is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.76.160 to remove M from the heading as the M class reference was removed from this section on October 23rd, 2017. And amending Section 4.08.070 and Section 20.10.285 to correct typographical errors.
So, or typing mistakes. There were a couple of small typing mistakes and then when we made a reference to changing the M class, we didn't change the heading although the, the text was changed. So that's all that's included in 19-139.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? Okay, we shall move on.
Next is amending Section 4.54.020 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow flexibility in the number of required Community Forestry Advisory Board meetings.
As you know, the Community Forestry Advisory Board is one of the important boards the city has where volunteers give it their time to provide guidance. Under the code, they were required to meet monthly, but they didn't need to meet monthly. And so rather than follow the code and have very brief unnecessary meetings on a monthly basis, this change takes away the requirement to meet monthly and lets them allow, under their own bylaws, how frequently they need to meet.
Seems very small. Anyone in the audience would like to comment on this one? Okay, let's move on.
All right, next is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Sections 24.42.010, 24.42.030, 24.42.040, and 24.42.070 to remove references to Chapter 4.10 of the city design standards as this chapter was repealed.
And that says it all. We repealed Chapter 4.10. We should have at the same time harmonized and taken out, taken out the references and the rest of the code to that chapter. We didn't and now we're cleaning that up.
Okay, any questions, comments here? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this one? Okay, let's move on.
All right, next is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 6.02.380 to correct a typographical error. Amending Section 6.08.0, 6.08.182, 6.12.130, and 6.112.132 to remove references to a repealed section. Amending Section 6.08.184 to correct punctuation errors. Amending Sections 6.12.130 and 6.12.132 to remove references to a repealed section.
So this is similar to the last one where we've, we've had a section that was repealed, another section still references that repealed section, so we're correcting that. And then there's one place where there's just a reference to the wrong section. And so we're correcting that internal reference.
Terrific. Any comments, any comments from anyone in the audience? Let's move on.
All right, next then is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Sections 8.02.010 and 8.42.010 to reference the correct sections. Amending Section 8.18.100 to correct a typographical error.
So this is similar. We're, we're changing a reference to the, the current code referring to mobile homes. We're taking out a reference to a specific year of the Nebraska revised statute because that's updated on a periodic basis and that's what that's doing here.
Okay, is there any comment up here? All right, anyone in the audience would like to make a comment? Let's move on.
All right, lastly, we have amending Section 2.76.040 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to put the listed definitions in alphabetical order and to provide, under the non-career service positions definition, that police trainees and fire trainees shall be eligible to participate in the vision plan.
This is corrects a mission where police and fire trainees already could participate in group health and dental plans. This would include vision as well. And then the definition section, for some reason, wasn't in alphabetic order and now it will be.
Terrific. Any comments from up here? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Thank you very much. That's a lot of cleanup.
Well, we skipped last year, so that's a little bit longer this year.
Okay. All right, Teresa.
Ready to go on?
We shall go on.
We'll go on to our ordinance's third reading. Item 7A is real estate sales agreement with Justin Johnson for property at 915 South 24th Street, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 7B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter W, by creating the classification of Parks and Rec Facilities Operations Manager, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7C, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter M, to change the title Systems Coordinator to Systems Development Manager and Micro Computer Network Support Coordinator to Network Infrastructure Manager, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 6D, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter A to change the pay range and title of Network Specialist 1 to Network Administrator 1, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, or introduced by Ward, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7E, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter A to change the pay range and title of Network Specialist 2 to Network Administrator 2, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7F, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter A to change the pay range and title of Quality Assurance Coordinator to Public Health Accreditation Coordinator, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Bowers?
Yes.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Re- Ward?
You got this.
You got this, Teresa. You can do it.
We're on your team.
That was a deep sigh, sorry. Item 7G, amending Chapter 5.41 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to salvaging, recycling, and composting operations to change recyclables drop-off operation to consumer recyclables collection site, to change the expiration date from July 31st to January 31st, and making it illegal to leave or deposit recyclables anywhere but in the provided containers or to leave or deposit solid waste or items other than consumer recyclables